Trustee Williams.
Present.
Trustee Brooks.
Present.
Trustee Jenkins-Bale.
Present.
Trustee Franklin.
Present.
Trustee Bowden.
Present.
Trustee McMullin.
Present.
Mayor RuDez.
Yeah.
Noting for the record, also present is Village Manager Ernestine Beck Fulcombe, Village Attorney Joe Miller. Is there anyone else?
Okay, well, I'm gonna read our disclaimer. Tuesday, October twenty seventh, twenty twenty, pursuant to Governor Pritzker's Executive Order twenty twenty dash zero seven COVID nineteen, Executive Order Number Five, which suspends the requirements of the Illinois Open Meetings Act, requiring in-person attendance by members of a public body during the duration of the gubernatorial disaster proclamation. The members of the village board will not be physically present for the designated board meeting, but will instead be participating in the meeting through audio access using a virtual meeting platform. Public comments may be submitted in advance of the meeting to village clerk D. Jones at D. J. O. N. E. S. at university hyphen park hyphen I L dot com or by text message to seven zero eight four seven three six two zero one. All comments must be received by five P. M. the day before the meeting. In order to give proper consideration to all items on this agenda, the mayor will limit participants in the debate and will close off protracted, repetitive, irreverent, or abusive remarks. Public comments will be limited to a total of thirty minutes. Uh, to stand up, let's do the pledge of allegiance, Madam Clerk.
Okay.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States and to the republic of which it stands.
One.
Under God, in the heavens, with liberty for all. Are there any public comments, Madam Clerk?
Uh. We skipping one.
Oh, okay. Approval of the minute, you're absolutely right. Yeah, because we tabled it last time, thank you, Madam Clerk. Is, is there a motion?
So move.
Second.
Move by Brooks, second by Trustee Williams. Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Trustee Williams.
Both I.
Trustee Brooks.
Both I.
Trustee Jenkins-Bale.
Both I.
Trustee Franklin.
Both I.
Trustee Bowden.
Both I.
Trustee, Trustee McMullin.
Both I.
Mayor RuDez.
Vote I. Thank you, Madam Clerk. Now, item E, are there any general public comments?
No, sir. I did not receive any public comments.
Okay. All right, we'll move forward, no one finished business. Uh, consent agenda, item F two, is there a motion? Wait, first of all, is there anybody who wants to have anything removed?
Today.
Consent agenda.
Yes, yes, ma'am, remember, be recognized.
Yes, sir.
Um. For tonight, um, Madam Clerk, I want to pull the following three, I have three. Um, F two D as in David. F two E as in Edward. And F two F as in Frank.
Okay, and, and, any particular reasons, Trustee?
Uh, actually, can we go item by item, ma'am? There's just some things, uh, I would like to, to amend, especially on F two E. Yeah, F two F, no, I'm sorry, F two F, so if we can.
F two. F two what?
F.
He, he's, he's asking to have items F two D, item F two E, and item F two F, uh, to be considered separately. Is that correct, sir?
Yes, sir, and then, like I say, it's just a quick minor thing. I did not get a chance to email the village manager, uh, just a couple quick things, that's it.
All right, so we're gonna set that to the side and, and we'll move on with the rest, and then we'll come back and discuss those items. Is, is there, is there a motion? Does anybody else wanna have anything else removed from the consent agenda? All right, is there, is there, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda outside of item F two D, item F two E, and item two F to be considered separately? Is there a motion?
A move.
Correction, correction, ma'am, you asked us that motion to, to, to approve the consent agenda, right?
Yes.
Yes.
Oh, okay, I, I, I'm sorry, I didn't hear you, yes, so move.
No, it was moved by Trustee Franklin, second by Trustee Brooks. Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Trustee Williams.
Both I.
Trustee Brooks.
Both I.
Trustee Jenkins-Bale.
Both I.
Trustee Franklin.
Both I.
Trustee Bowden.
Both I.
Trustee McMullin.
Both I.
And Mayor RuDez.
Both I.
Mister Mayor. That's for F two A, that's ordinance twenty twenty dash thirteen. F two B is ordinance twenty twenty dash fourteen. F two C is ordinance twenty twenty dash fifteen. And item F two G is resolution or twenty twenty dash thirty-two.
Twenty twenty dash thirty-two, okay. All right, thank you, Madam Clerk. All right, item F, F two D, uh, Trustee Brooks, you have some, uh, some language change or amendments you were recommending?
Yes, uh, actually. All right, all right, okay, for. Actually, can I, can I, can I just choose which one? I wanna go first, ma'am.
Go, 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 right, go, go right here.
Okay, uh, Madam Clerk, I want to go to F two F in reference to the, the fund. If I can, uh, and I, and I just wanna go, uh, what was the motion? The motion to authorize the village manager and the finance director to transfer the amount into general funds account and close the other accounts. I am in agreement with that, I just ask if we can, uh, for the state of the residents, uh, instead of transferring the justice fund Midland account, if we can, follow me here, uh, Madam Clerk, if we can, trustees, if we can leave the truck enforcement, unless there's a second one, I don't think we have a second truck enforcement, but if we can transfer that fund into the police truck and for, uh, weight enforcement account, leave that account open and transfer the justice funds into there and close that bank account. If we can take the Hickory School Funds as well as the C D A P Fund, the Capital Project Fund, and I guess this would be the question that I'm, I'mma ask just for a little help from Madam Village Manager, if we can take that total and put it into a tree cutting, uh, uh, the tree cutting to the list of trees that we have on the list that D. P. W. has that we had already generated, of trees we had already cut that were diseased, if we can put those funds into, uh, and that's why I'mma ask you, Madam Village Manager, do we have a account? You always say an escrow account, but if we can take those funds and use it for that immediately before Christmas?
Okay, Trustee, Trustee Brooks, I got a question.
Yes, sir.
I had, I had, I had a, a, a conversation with Mrs. Kelly, and she said, it, it's, it's advised that all the money will go into the general fund because we're coming toward that time, and we wanna ensure that we have, uh, the things in place for the things that are necessary to continue to run in the government.
And I, okay, I'm not gonna dispute that, uh.
And I also, I also had a conversation with, uh, Ms. Kelly as well, and she recommended that, um, I think, let me see, that the police truck.
Enforcement.
If, if, to keep that one open as well, because there may be funds coming in, and, and rather than to open up another account, since this one is always, already open, we could possibly use that one.
All right.
Yeah.
Question, I have a question. Why can't we just leave the money where it is?
No. Could I explain something, guys?
Yeah, Trustee, ma'am, I mean, go ahead, manager. Good question, Liz.
Well, we have the, uh, it's called the OX Kart Fund, and we've talked about this, and I've talked with the chief, and I've talked with the, uh, with, with, uh, Ms. Kelly. We've agreed that the OX Kart, uh, the OX Kart Fund that automatically pays its payment, that the, the fund police, uh, truck weight enforcement Midland account remain open, we take those OX Karts fund, rather than to put them in the village's general fund, we leave this account on, open, since it has to do with overweight trucks. Take those dollars and put it in this fund. So that's what we're asking, that the police, uh, truck weight enforcement Midland account from Midland Bank remain open. We take the dollars, stop it from going to general fund, and have the dollars to go into this particular account. Now, that's, that's the, that's what we agreed that has to, we had to look at all the sources, and, and it was really something that the auditor had cleared. This way, there's a direct line, it'll be very easily read and very easily done. It'll be its own separate account, and we can deal with it.
And, and, ma'am, can I be recognized on a comment you made?
Go ahead, Trustee.
Yeah, I, I'll, I'll say this, trustees, uh, see, um, I did not. He, the mayor does have a point, and, um, Ms. Kelly does have a point. Uh, as much as I want to see the trees cut, uh, 'cause there had been a complaint, but, uh, I will also say that, uh, Trustee Williams and myself, and despite any, 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 anything that someone may put out of, of any conversation or, uh, uh, relationship I may have with the mayor, one thing we do, we do conversate, and I think we made, about two weeks ago, ma'am, we did conversate the importance of that we need, of what general funds, and I will say that I, this one, I would definitely yield that, um, money does need to be put into that account. Uh, we're at a point, uh, that I spoke about last year, uh, that we are in a little strategy because, uh, Trustee Williams and myself seen that there has been an incredible, credible shortfall of taxpayer money that fell to this village. Now, it's not the village's fault, it's not the taxpayers' fault, it's strictly that, that invisible enemy called COVID nineteen. So, residents should see the seriousness of this, and it, it, it tears me up, but I, I'm sorry, but, um, it is that serious that we're gonna have to buckle down and figure out what to do, and for those know that we do want things done, uh, Madam Village Manager, we can at some point still entertain the residents, uh, who are concerned of the safety of the trees, uh, then maybe we can get something done, or whatever we can spare, but, um, I'mma read, I'mma withdraw that, um, Madam Clerk, of asking that those two funds be moved into truck enforcement, and in fact, we, I think I would have to make that motion that the OX, am I saying it right? OX.
OX.
OX Kart, OX Kart Fund be transferred into the truck enforcement account, and that the truck enforcement account remain open, but we do switch the rest of our money into general funds. That, I yield my time, ma'am.
Okay, now, I mean, make sure I've got your motion. You want to transfer the OX Kart Funds
Correct.
into overweight fund.
Correct.
And leave it where it is.
Correct.
Yes.
Okay. Okay, uh, we need a second.
So what did you say, put into general funds?
No.
The, the rest.
I can't hear you.
The rest of the funds were going to general funds because, remember what we seen, Liz, with the, the tax dollars that were with shortfall, the shortfall we would be getting?
Okay.
So, so the, yeah, the mayor is correct, uh, and, and Ms. Kelly is correct. We, we are, we are in an emergency of needing funds in there.
Okay.
Got a question or comment before we move forward? I don't know if it's to, I see your hand up too, Shirley, go ahead, Shirley.
Uh, I was gonna, I just reiterate what, uh, Trustee Brooks said, and I have been talking with, uh, Jocelia and the village, and the taxes and all, you know, all the revenues that we normally would get with this COVID going on, it's putting a damper on not only University Park, but everybody. So, like I said, the funds we were expecting, and, and Village Manager and I have talked about that extensively, what we thought we would have coming in, and Jocelia, what we thought we would have coming in, is not coming in now. So we have to really, we were watching our dollars already, but in right now, we really got to watch these dollars because this COVID is striking again, it's coming around again. Will County is right in the middle of it now. So we need to keep that in mind as we go through this as well. I, thank you. Go ahead.
And I'm, I'm in full agreeance, uh, of going ahead and moving forward to transferring it to the, to the general fund. Uh, my initial thought was the Hickory, the Hickory School Fund would make a push for it to be invested into the youth in some way, but, uh, I'm in full agreement with Mayor and, and everything that's being said here, that it would make sense to move it into that, but I do have a question about the Hickory Fund because I've been trying to do some research, and maybe Clerk D can help me out, or even Mayor RuDez, um, was, is, is this the fund, uh, funding or monies that, um, we received due to a lawsuit that was involved in the school district? Does anyone know? Because I've been trying to find out exactly what this fund, just because I'm a graduate of Hickory, and, and, and it means something to me to see some money that's been sitting so long, I'm just saying, I'm just out of curiosity wondering what that fund was, and where did the money come from?
Not that I don't know, because I know the Hickory School Fund, the Hickory School was not part of that lawsuit that was filed, that was against a Deer Creek Junior High School, but it was at the time, so I don't know what that fund is.
Okay, thank you. Shirley, your hands up?
Yes, I also talked to Jocelia about that, and if I recall, so don't quote me on this, she thought that this might have been some grant that was awarded at one point, and, and it's just had been sitting there, like, like you know, it hasn't been in activity on it, so it was just sitting there. And, uh, since, I wanna say, I, I don't even remember what year she said it's been sitting there for that long, but I, if, if I'm on the right one, that's, I believe that's what she said, so don't quote me on that, I can double check with her, but she did give me an explanation for it, we had so many items I was discussing, but I think that was one reason, um, about this Hickory School one.
Okay.
So we can, I can check, you know, we can check with Jocelia again on that one.
Okay, thank you. I yield my time. I think we need a second, is that where we at? Where, where at, we need a second? I'll second that.
Yes, sir.
Yeah.
Motion by Trustee Brooks, uh, second by Trustee Franklin, roll call, Madam Clerk.
Trustee Williams.
Both I.
Trustee Brooks.
Both I.
Trustee Jenkins-Bale.
Both I.
Trustee Franklin.
Both I.
Trustee Bowden.
Both I.
Trustee McMullin.
Both I.
Mayor RuDez.
Both I.
Mister Mayor. That is.
F two, right.
Resolution, that's F two F. And that's a resolution. Twenty twenty dash thirty.
Thirty-one.
Okay.
Thirty-one.
Okay. Yeah.
All right, Trustee Brooks, we've knocked out that one, what's the next one, sir?
Uh, F two E as in Edward. Uh, I just want to go very quickly, Madam Village Manager, you had sent a spreadsheet, but it was, uh, it was not exactly, uh, at, at what we needed for the funding, 'cause, uh, according to the minutes, you said you were gonna provide the funding source, so I didn't get the funding source, did you? Did we have, uh, any type of statement or anything? Because it was just the grants that, that you had sent to all the trustees.
When you said the funding sources, you mean on this particular project?
Yes, ma'am, that, that you were supposed to send, unless, unless it was something else you sent me, and I didn't get it in the email, I only seen that all the, the grants you had got, I didn't, I didn't see any, anything on the funding source. I know we had a lot, you might admit. I just wanna make sure that we have the dollars so we can do it.
This, this is what we're at, this particular, um, approval is for engineering for phase one for the university side path. That particular, um, grant has been funded through Metro. The engineer has been funded.
Oh, this was the Metro?
This is the Metro. And with the side pass, what it does, it connects Governor State University to the, um, the, uh, the intermodal of the train station all the way west, where there are no sidewalks to anticipated, um, development, Governor's Highway West to Cicero Avenue towards university, I mean, the industrial park. If you aren't in a car or anything else, they can't have access to that, and so we want, um, some access paths up and down Stunkel Road, University Parkway, um, all the way to Cicero Avenue, because.
Isn't that the one I've been working on, working with?
Yeah, Stunk, uh, the University Parkway, yes, this is connected to this, it's a part of the, uh, the part of the, um, the development, but this is a directly across the street from the, the rail road crossing, yes.
Okay, and, and, uh, this is not a matching grant, though? This is fully funded by Metro?
Strictly funded by, uh, Metro. It will also, uh, the, the, uh, Metro and through I. Dot. Uh, I. Dot has its way, you know, Metro, I. Dot, Illinois Department of Transportation, it's a combination of I. Dot, uh, Metro, a combination, but the village didn't have to pay anything, it's a part of this grant, it's one hundred percent funding, we're not required to have a match.
Okay, all right, Mister Mayor, uh, our motion, uh, for the resolution to authorize the execution agreement between the village, University Park, and Arturo Group.
All right, there's motion, there was second?
Second.
Second by Trustee. Second by Trustee William. Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Trustee Williams.
Both I.
Trustee Brooks.
Both I.
Trustee Jenkins-Bale.
Both I.
Trustee Franklin.
Both I.
Trustee Bowden.
Both I.
Trustee McMullin.
Both I.
Mayor RuDez.
Both I, Madam Clerk.
Mister Mayor, that is resolution twenty.
Okay.
Uh, I'm sorry, twenty twenty dash.
Next one, Madam Clerk.
Could I?
Thirty.
Could I be recognized?
We couldn't hear your D.
You said twenty twenty dash what?
Twenty twenty. Dash thirty.
Twenty twenty.
All right, go ahead, manager.
Um, the, uh, Trustee Brooks, the.
Yes, ma'am.
Outline that I provided to you, provided the sources of, of finances. If you look under program, it'll tell you, for example, where it says, the first line, six two twenty twenty, the agency is I. Dot Motor Fuel Tax Fund. It gives you the agency and the program source of the dollars, they're all listed, like, for example, nine twenty-six, uh, twenty twenty, the Stega Road Improvement, it came from, uh, invest in Cook, Cook County monies from Cook County. So the agency and the program sources of funds were all listed. They're all listed.
Oh, okay, so, oh, so that's what that meant when you sent it? Okay, you have to excuse that one, I can't see. Uh, okay, I see it, I see it, thank you.
All righty.
All right, thank you, Madam Clerk. Okay, and, uh. By the way, good job getting those grants, keep, keep it up, absolutely.
Not over yet.
Okay, so.
Oh, I know.
Okay, uh, F two D, ma'am, um, I just wanna refer very quickly, I know that we had discussed this, I wanna make sure that, I know this is exploratory, but I wanna make sure, I wanna give my stand on it if it's different, um, before I say yes or no, or votes I or N. Um, the, this building that we had, um, and I wanna refer to, when we discussed this, we had, did the ride along with the engineers in March for a fire station, and that we were going to invest the leftover money for the Amazon into that fire station, but then, I wanna know about this project in which, I wanna check, Madam Village Manager, this is more of a quote, to do this, and a rent to buy in lieu of being out a G. O. Bond, but there is no charge to this company, they just wanna talk, so I just want to say in this instance, I mean, what, what, what are we gonna do? I wanna make sure what decision or what path we're gonna take, because I get two on, I get, kinda got, I know, I know time changes, but we have two different stances, I wanna make sure the position that when someone asks me, what are we gonna do? We either gonna, uh, renovate Station, uh, Station Two with the monies left over from the Amazon, or we gonna do this, in which their agreement is, is that we gotta rent to buy in lieu of getting a G. O. Bond, so I wanna make sure that I have, when someone asks me this question, 'cause we know what time of year it is, I have a, a stance on what we're gonna do.
Okay, first of all, this is a non-binding entity. Before we could give them, um, the authority, before I could give them the authority to move forth to begin to investigate or do anything, I had to come to the board, had them to provide this and come to the board. Now, what this says is they're going to examine the options, all the options, that's all they're gonna do, is examine the, uh, the, the options, give us, uh, okay, it's low battery, okay. Uh, there, there, my computer is getting going dead. They're gonna examine the options, and they're gonna make the recommendation based on, um, a lease agreement in lieu of bond. That's what they're planning to do, whatever they plan to do, or even if they found some other options, they're gonna give it all to us in writing, all to us in writing, before we move even further in anything. So this is merely an investigative kind of thing, so that's it. So you can tell them, there, and, and the existing firehouse is what we're gonna use impact dollars for. For example, three of the four garage doors are down, and we need to get those done right away. There's major leakage in the roof, even if we were to move to this public, um, this public.
Safety building.
Safety building, it'll be police and fire, and that's where Fire Station Number Two and an outpost for the Police Department will be located. Then, the existing Fire Station Number Two, we have plans of putting public works in that location.
Okay, so we, so we're gonna change, we're gonna change everything based upon, since March when we did our tour, so we're still going to use the dollars for Station Two?
Yes, they gotta live there now, there's nothing we can do, and they gotta still export their services out of there to compensate the Tiff Seven, so we don't have a choice. We gotta continue to do that.
And, and, ma'am, if we have to make accommodations for, uh, an additional washroom, correct?
Yes, the law says, uh, women are staying there, there's no bathroom, the law says we can't do that, so we gotta have a bathroom, the roof is leaking, it's molded, and, uh, they're gonna do some rehab on the building. They have escrowed, uh, in their budget that amount.
Okay.
In the impact.
What's your opinion about, in lieu of renting, in lieu of a G. O. Bond, or is that we're gonna bring it to the board, if they bring us?
I have no opinion, I'm bringing it to the board, whatever it is.
Where all that bond nonsense comes from?
I will bring it to the board.
Okay, ma'am, I yield my time.
All right. All right, is there a motion? Trustee Brooke?
I'll, I'll motion it up, Mayor, for a resolution approving the authorization of the binding letter to attend for the village with progressives.
Non-binding.
None, none, oh, none, none.
Second it.
A second.
All right, and a second, Madam Kirk, all right.
Trustee McMullin was the first one in.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah.
All right, roll call, Madam Kirk.
Trustee Williams.
Both I.
Trustee Brooks.
Pass.
Trustee Jenkins-Bale.
Votes no.
Trustee Franklin.
Both I.
Trustee Bowden.
Both I.
Trustee McMullin.
Both I.
Trustee Brooks.
Votes no.
Mayor Ruth Diz.
Both I, Madam Kirk.
Mr. Mayor, motion carries. That's Resolution Twenty Twenty Dash Twenty Nine.
Okay, very good, guys. Thank you. Now that wraps up the consent agenda. Let's go down to new business. Item F three eight and approving and authorizing execution of a short-term lease agreement for the property commonly referred to as eight hundred University Parkway, University Park, Illinois, six zero four eight four. Is there a motion?
I got a question. I got a question. I noticed in my packet, it did not tell you how much they were paying for rent. So how much would they be paying for rent?
Right, we got a motion at first, right, Mayor? Point of order?
Mad, mad.
All right, I'll motion for that.
I'll second.
Okay, questions?
I'd like to know if they're paying for rent a month.
Mad, Mad, Manager E?
We're gonna go in compliance with the other because what they're doing is actually using the pad. They won't be using any facilities or anything. So we're, I don't, if, if you will, to make it public, can we discuss that as a part of real estate in the, in the executive session attorney?
Sale of rent, yeah, that qualifies.
Yeah, you can. Lacer, lacer sale of village property would qualify as a reason to go into closed session.
Yeah, because we got some positive news and I wanna bring that out in, in executive session.
Okay.
So what we need to do is then, this will have to, this Yeah, we're gonna table it until after closed session.
All right.
That makes sense.
Okay, somebody make a motion to table?
I'll make a motion to table.
Madam Kirk, you take care of second, okay?
I heard trustee Bowden.
Okay. Roll, roll call.
Trustee Williams.
Both I.
Trustee Brooks.
Both I.
Trustee Jenkins-Bale.
Both I.
Trustee Franklin.
Both I.
Trustee Bowden.
Both I.
Trustee McMullin.
Both I.
Mayor Ruth Diz.
Both I, Madam Kirk.
Okay, so this one will be coming back after the executive session.
Okay, that's item F three A. All right, item F three B, a resolution approving and authorizing the execution of an intergovernmental agreement by and between the Village of University Park and the Illinois Department of Natural Resources. Is there a motion?
Motion.
Motion by trustee.
Can we, can we, so there, if I wanna discuss this, we can do it after the motion? Is that where?
After, after your second, trustee.
Okay.
Is that, is that a second?
Second.
Okay, so second, trustee William. Questions?
Mayor?
Um, this is to village manager. First of all, I'm glad to see that something is being done over Pine Lake. So this is my, you know, my project from day one, since the mayor and I went down to Springfield to save that grant. And I had said that this was gonna be my projects from day one. So my, my question to village manager, we talked about this today. You said they are going to be, they're gonna be putting the, putting the fish in the pond this year. If we still have time or we're gonna wait to next year? How did you say that? And, and also that I worked with Governor State and Senate that year on, on, on Pine Lake. So just to make that clear, that's my project.
Question, question. I don't know when Shirley jumped on this, but I had jumped on this and I've been on this for years. So I don't understand how you jumped in when I've been working on this and I've been working on it with different people. You know, even the Senator Joyce, all of these people. So.
I understand that. We may have to talk about that in this closed session. We may have to talk about that. But when I, when we first got elected again, and when we went down to Springfield, I had announced at that point that, that Pine Lake would be my project. Even at a board meeting, he may have it in the minutes and neither may have it on, on. So we can discuss that later.
I honestly don't remember that, but I can also tell you that I brought this to the manager's attention. You know, that we've been working on getting things done.
Let me just stop everybody right there about this. That, that was my project. That was my project.
Oh, my God.
Right.
And I, and I've done the homework. I've done all the logistics. I've got the renderings. I've got everything that was done. We applied for the grant when I was a trustee. We got the grant. Unfortunately, they didn't, we didn't have the matching funds. No construction was done, so we lost the grant. When I got elected as mayor, we went down there, trustee Shirley Bowden and I, and ever since that, since I've been mayor, trustee has been working on it and meeting on that and working on funding the Pine Lake. So I've got all, I've got all the records from age, from two thousand and ten to two thousand and now on every step and measure of the way about Pine Lake, renderings, legislation, grants, proposals and everything. So I've been, that's been my baby from day one. It's not my baby anymore.
From day one.
And it's one of the trustees in the board. We'll get it together. That's, that's what's going on with Pine.
We can discuss it later.
But, you know, we, we, it's, it's still an improvement for the community. So as long as it happens to make the community a better place.
Why wasn't I told that? It's not true.
Okay.
If I conversations can be hit later, can we?
Yeah, let's keep on moving on with the business.
Yeah, so back to my question, village manager, will the stocking of the pond be done this year or we're going to wait? Well, what we're trying to do currently, the weather is conducive. We get this into them, them. That's why I was, I've been trying to get it approved and on this. And we had to wait about thirty days, but if we can get this in, it is still conducive to get it done. I have to provide the papers for them. I will get a specific response for them and I will definitely let you all know. But we're targeting before the snow hits because, as you know, fish, the snow on top of water acts and warms sublevels in terms of fish. So we still have time, but I'm gonna go on the state's recommendation. But I will surely let you know tomorrow I will be providing the information to the state.
Mayor, can I be recognized? Mayor, can I be recognized? I like the fact that trustee Williams and trustee Bowden is making this happen and along with. I like it. I like it. I really do. And, and I know that Bowden has taken the time with you to go down to Springfield to get this done. And I seen her on television. Now, I also noticed that Williams is doing it too. So we can all benefit from this, both of, both of the trustees doing what they have to do. And I like that.
Well, it, it's a good.
I thank you. I thank you, trustee McMullin.
Yeah, because what it does, it just enhances the quality of life of University Park. As long as the thing gets done, that's what it's all about. This works together, team.
Can I, can I just mention one other thing? Also, we're waiting, contractor Precise Trees will be ultimately coming before probably mid-November or prior to. They're going to do major landscaping and tree cuts back all through the road space that will allow for a new growth coming spring of two thousand and, two thousand twenty-one. So we're getting that as well. So that'll be another plus over there. Then I will attempt by that time to have the audits in place to go back to IDNR because they're doing this at no charge. This is a freebie for them. We've not gonna have to pay a dime for it. If I can go back to IDNR again and get, try to get some monies to get the balance of the infrastructure like the, the benches, the, we wanna look at a floating theater out there. There are some plans that are out there and we can only get a few monies at a time. So we're not done with this yet. So I appreciate the trustees. I really do.
And, and, and the good thing is now we're gonna be back in compliance and we'll be eligible for all of our grants by doing due diligence, by getting our audits and everything called up. So that's the good news in it. Let's move on.
That's, that's my point, Mayor. At least when we go for, apply for that grant again, they can see that there has been some kind of activity out there because that was one of the things, you know, she brought up and when we were down there, that, that nothing, had no activity had been done at Pine Lake at all. That's, we had to return that grant.
Right, and if, right, and if anything had been, we had been able to establish the grant, but we're moving forward.
But we can go back and reapply.
Yep, all right.
Question?
Yes, yes, trustee. Trustee Brooks?
Yeah, I just wanted to follow up, when, prior to you arriving, Mayor, this had came up before, and I was sitting with trustee Williams and we drilled DPW. I just got a couple of questions to see that you all may not be aware of. We, did, did we ever follow through on that chemical that they had put in, in there to, I guess it was in reference to try to stop the algae? Did we ever address that? We did?
Yeah.
Yes, we did. Yes, we did.
Okay, the next one, I see the term of the contract. Did, did, did we get how long it's gonna be? I, I didn't know. I seen, I noticed the term, the term of the contract was blank.
Right.
Until completion, I believe.
It's from start to finish. And I couldn't put that in because, first of all, and they know and I've talked to them, until the board actually approves the contract, that information will be given to them and then they will let us know. And then they can tell us the approximate time of completion. I couldn't put it in because I didn't know.
Okay, the, the term, and the last one is the, the term of the boating safety for sport fishermen. Are we going to open the lake to that extent of fishery? Or are we going to continue with as is? Because I did notice it, it was in the contract that if we do do it, it would have to be in compliance of the boating safety. Yeah.
That's my question too. Yeah.
Well, let me just, I, I don't know if you all have been made aware, but University Park has had to roll back based on COVID nineteen. So as a result of that, we're gonna, we're gonna continue to do what we're gonna do, but we cannot open the park back up. And the park actually closes anyway in less than a couple of weeks. So this is.
But I'm, I'm talking about the, the boating safety. I wanna get the boating safety question out the way.
Yeah, there's, there's no boating at Pine Lake, trustee.
So we, so we, because I was, because the next Yeah, because I was gonna say the next question is that if we do it, were we gonna have somebody to deal with boat inspections or whoever's in compliance to be on the boat? That's all. Although, although it's in the contract and we can't open it, but the next, I was gonna say, if we did it, Mr. Mayor, Madam Village Manager and the Board of Trustees, we did have this in Country Club Hills. The only thing that we would probably entertain next is that a lot, having a, a fire department into dealing with boat rescue safety. Oh, excuse me, boat rescue exercise.
At, at one time, that was the home of the Will Collie Dive Team. I don't know if you remember that.
Oh, really?
Yeah.
Yeah. Oh, okay. Yeah. So, so then, yeah, I was just gonna say, if we, if we did it, I just wanted to know where we going? Because my point was gonna be, was that it would be a great, a great thing for us. But, you know, let's just make sure that we put it in the budget that the fire department or who we, whoever would be rather responsible for the boat. I yield my time, Mayor.
All right.
For boat rescue, I'm sorry.
All right. Any, any other questions? We got a motion and a second. I was gonna ask a question. All right, is there, is there a, roll call, Madam Kirk?
Trustee Williams. Both I. Trustee Brooks.
Both I.
Trustee Jenkins-Bale.
Both I.
Trustee Franklin.
Both I.
Trustee Bowden.
Both I.
Trustee McMullin.
Both I.
Mayor Ruth Diz.
Both I.
Mr. Mayor, that's Resolution Twenty Twenty Dash Thirty.
All right, item F three C, I am unable to pull up the proclamation. Does anyone have the proclamation? I want to read the proclamation for recognizing School Choice Week. Okay, trustee Franklin, would you kindly read the proclamation?
A proclamation recognizing January twenty fourth, two thousand twenty-one through January thirty first, two thousand twenty-one as School Choice Week. Whereas the Village of University Park is a homeroom, homeroom unit of local government with authority granted pursuant to Illinois Constitution of nineteen seventy to exercise certain powers and perform certain functions pertaining to its local government and affairs. Whereas all children in the Village of University Park should have access to the highest quality education as possible. Whereas the Village of University Park recognizes the important role that an effective education, that effective education plays in preparing all students in the Village of University Park to be successful adults. Whereas quality education is critically important to economic vitality of the Village of University Park. Whereas the Village of University Park is home to a multitude of high-quality public and non-public schools for which parents can choose for their children in addition to families who educate their childrens at home. Whereas educational variety not only helps the diversity of our economy, but also enhances the vibrancy of our community. Whereas the Village of University Park has many high-quality teaching professionals in all types of school settings who are committed to educating our children. Whereas School Choice Week is celebrated across the country by millions of students, parents, educators, schools and organizations to raise awareness of the need to effectively educate our children. Now therefore be it proclamated, proclamated that Mayor Joseph E. E. S. or Village Clerk Dorothy R. Jones and the Village of University Park Board of Trustees do hereby proclaim January twenty fourth, two thousand twenty-one to January thirtieth, two thousand twenty-one as the Village of University Park School Choice Week. And hereby ask the residents of the Village of University Park, observe and support this very important issue.
Is there a motion?
So move.
Move by trustee Franklin.
Second.
Second.
Second by trustee William and Jenkins-Bale. Roll call, Madam Kirk.
Trustee Williams.
Both I.
Trustee Brooks.
Both I.
Trustee Jenkins-Bale.
Both I.
Trustee Franklin.
Both I.
Trustee Bowden.
Both I.
Trustee McMullin.
Both I.
Mayor Ruth Diz.
Both, both I. Thank, thank you, trustee Franklin. Item F three D, a resolution authorizing the execution of an intergovernmental agreement by and between fire departments and major division twenty-seven. Is there a motion? Move by trustee Bowden.
Second.
Second by trustee McMullin. Question? Roll call, Madam Kirk.
Trustee Williams.
What, what, what number was this? I'm sorry.
This is item F three D.
D.
Page three, Trusty.
D.
At the top. Item F three D. Davis and David.
Okay, okay, yes. Both sides.
Okay.
Trusty Brooks.
Both sides.
Trusty Jenkins-Bell. Trusty Jenkins-Bell. Trusty Jenkins-Bell. I'll come back. I'll come back to her. Trusty Bowden.
Both sides.
Trusty McMullin.
Both sides.
Trusty Franklin.
Both sides.
Trusty Jenkins-Bell.
Both sides.
Mayor Ruth Dears. Mayor Ruth Dears.
He's he's.
Ruth Dears, you mute. He's muted.
He's muted.
Unmute yourself, Mayor.
Bo- boots, both sides, Madam Clerk, thank you.
Okay, Mr. Mayor, that's Resolution twenty twenty dash thirty-four.
Okay. Item F three E, a resolution approving the surplus and decommission of certain personal property of the Village of University Park. Is there a motion?
Motion.
Move by Trusty Jenkins-Bell. Who got the second, Madam Clerk? Okay, by Trusty Bowden. Questions?
Question, just just checking, it is the fire truck that we looking at, right?
Correct, yeah.
That old one.
The old one.
The dinosaur.
The old.
Yellow one.
Wow.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yep.
Alright, roll call, Madam Clerk.
Trusty Williams. Both eyes. Trusty Brooks.
Both sides.
Trusty Jenkins-Bell.
Both sides.
Trusty Franklin.
Both sides.
Trusty Bowden.
Both sides.
Trusty McMullin.
Both sides.
Mayor Ruth Dears.
Both sides, Madam Clerk.
It's approved, Mr. Mayor, that's Resolution twenty twenty dash thirty-five.
Awesome. Item three F, a resolution approving and authorizing the execution of a contract by and between the Village of University Park and Talbot Roofing and Construction Services, Inc. Is there a motion?
Motion.
Move by Trusty Jenkins-Bell. Is there a second?
Second.
Question.
Second by what my second, Trusty, second by Trusty McMullin. Questions?
Question. What do we what do we uh what list did they did they um prepare?
Regal Farm. Regal Farm.
That's that's what's going on now. They're gonna re- does it say? Okay, that that's okay, nothing.
Uh I just got a question, uh is uh Trusty Bell, you full aware of everything that they're doing?
Yes.
Okay, I yield my time, Mayor.
Alright. Is it roll call, Madam Clerk?
Trusty Williams. Both eyes. Trusty Brooks.
Both sides.
Trusty Jenkins-Bell.
Both sides.
Trusty Franklin.
Both sides.
Trusty Bowden.
Both sides.
Trusty McMullin.
Both sides. Jenkins-Bell.
Both sides.
Both sides, Madam Clerk.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, that's Resolution twenty twenty dash thirty-six.
Thank you, trustees, thank you, thank you. We're well on our way, moving forward.
What's the number D?
Thirty-six.
Okay, here we are. Bills payable attached to your approval is a listing of general operating expenses for the Village of University Park that occurred on September twenty-third, twenty twenty through October twenty-seventh, twenty twenty. General fund, three hundred and sixty thousand, five sixty-nine and thirty-seven. Road and Bridge, one fifteen thousand, three seventy-two and sixty-two. Town Center Fund, eleven thousand, four hundred and fifty-three. Capital Project, three ninety-nine-two, four-two and twenty-one. Tier Four, Five and Six, one thousand. Payroll Fund, six thousand, six hundred and forty-nine, twenty-four, with a total of seven hundred and eighty-nine, four-five and zero-seven. Is there a motion?
So, move.
Move by Trusty McMullin?
Yes.
Second.
Second by Trusty Bowden. Questions?
Question. Okay. You uh you there, Madam Clerk?
Yes, I am.
Okay, um I just have one, two, three, four, five, six, maybe seven. Uh check one oh five, eight two three. It is the aid rental for the auger for two thousand eight hundred and ninety-five dollars. Uh is this gonna be the last time we use it, Madam Village? Let me see what screen you on, I can't see you. Uh, did she leave?
No, no, I'm at my computer went out, I'm on joy.
Okay, yeah, is that is that the last time we're gonna spend? I know we purchased it, purchased the auger with the funds. Or is that the auger for for the for that we we purchased? I wanna make sure. Let's see what we got. Is that is that the, I'm I'm sorry, is that the auger that we got from the impact fees? Or is that a rental?
Uh, this is the last time, this is the old bill is for the rental. We hope not to use that anymore. We we've we've already received all our bits for the augers. Only thing we're waiting on is the actual two-man auger that we should have soon. But this is the last time we're gonna be renting it. We'll have our own.
Okay, um I'm I might have missed this. And and by the way, thank you, Madam Village Manager and Madam Clerk for uh this was the first time I get all invoices. I don't know, I guess the my my trusty iPad has uh it was a lot I looked through. I just wanna make sure, I I don't think I looked over this, but check one oh five, eight two four. I don't I don't remember seeing this invoice for four thousand one hundred and thirty-three from Amber Mechanical. What what was that? I didn't see it.
That was that was both for police and fire. It happened in May of and June of twenty twenty. There were air conditioning units repaired.
I remember that, okay, thank you, I do remember that. Alright, uh we may wanna check the checking on this one because I don't I wanna make sure. And 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 by the way, my second question, is this coming out of the Special Events Fund? One oh five, eight four zero for Brave Dialogue. You get nine hundred and fifty dollars on the one check registry. But when you go down to look to see, I couldn't find it. I look on page two of of the uh where you all have the breakdown. It only shows that Brave Dialogue is supposed to receive six hundred and fifty for doing the town hall host. So, it's something it's something wrong in the checking.
It's wrong because what happened, it's it's uh Brave Dialogue with Cohen. There was two accompan- it was a combination of two. It was one for six something and was one for two something. The toll bill was nine fifty. I looked at the bill even this afternoon, so this nine hundred and fifty dollars is correct.
Okay, so the six fifty is just what was another bill? So, it's.
Yes, yes, it's a combination, it's a combination of two.
Now, now, cause this question probably gonna get posted, probably gonna get posted. Is it, oh, I'm hearing myself twice. Okay, is this uh is this going to be paid out of special events?
No, this is town halls, so that that will be village, that's not special event. That's village.
Okay.
So, this paid out of miscellaneous under village. This is not special event. Town Hall is village.
Okay, well then, let me just double check, cause I know, well, this would be special event, one oh five, nine oh six. The 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 movie night for the twenty-four hundred. Now, that would come out of special events, right?
Yes, it is.
Okay, okay.
It has come out of special event.
It has, okay.
Yeah.
Alright, and just, okay. Just checking on on this one, I seen where we still owe seventy-nine thousand dollars. Is that just a contract issue for check one oh five, eight oh nine? And check one oh s- one oh five, seven, nine six is for these for the the town center. The first check was one nineteen, seven hundred. The second one was one ninety-nine, five hundred. We still owe the seventy-nine. I mean, is that did we owe, did something go wrong? What?
What check number?
Uh, one oh five, eight oh nine, it's 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 towards the back. And then have one oh five, seven, ninety-six. But what I was saying, I was glad uh that they sent me, cause if you read the invoice, they're saying we still owe them seventy-nine thousand dollars. So.
Yes.
Yeah, or 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 I'm asking, are we getting a good break? Cause this would be a good break, three hundred and nineteen thousand. If y'all negotiate it in two, that's a good break, but I don't think we getting that lucky, right?
No, no.
Okay. I was no, I was trying, I thought we were getting lucky, but yes, I see.
No.
Yeah, three hundred and nineteen thousand and two hundred, I see we paid, but so we're gonna pay that next bill's payable or?
Uh, yes, we're we're gonna try to, trustee. We're trying to get them all up to date. So, it is anticipated that we're trying to do it. So, I would say yes. Today, I would say contingent on the amount of monies we have to to pay certain bills, but yes.
Okay, um I have, I do have a question. Somebody asked asked this. I love what we got, uh well, I wouldn't say, I say it's nice. Uh, check one oh, one oh five, seven, nine, four, yes press, four thousand, nine hundred and ninety-four dollars and zero cent. Now, again, it's Trusty Brooks. If I'll be in the paper, can my name get mentioned one time? More than one time, I mean? But.
What?
Check one oh five, seven, nine.
Oh, the newsletter?
Yeah, the newsletter. If we gonna that amount, if we gonna pay that amount of money, I think all trustees should be quite a bit in there. Cause that was one complaint I got. So, this is just a little fuss box session on that one. And then I'm gonna yield my uh actually.
Actually, I'm missing all that.
You didn't see that? Trusty Bowden?
No, they don't, they don't have that. They don't have that, that was a part of the last one. You're just bringing it into play, they provided that to you. But the one they have should start with one oh five, eight, one, nine. That's what I'm looking for, yeah, yeah.
Okay. Oh, yeah, the one I got is uh for four thousand, nine hundred and ninety-four dollars, but.
Yeah. Yes, that was the one, but but you, I I hear exactly what you're saying. But um I I I I would assume, I thought you were in the the last newsletter. Ac- actually, I thought you were. You you were not?
One time.
Oh, okay, well then, maybe next time I'll read it, okay.
Need to see your pretty face, Brooks.
I have a couple of questions, if Brooks is uh.
He's having separation anxiety.
Trusty, Trusty, Trusty Brooks, are you finished?
Uh, you know, one question, uh did we have the attorney fee of the attorney breakdown in there? I didn't see it.
Oh, we did, we did. We had them all itemized on that, the backup, yes, sir.
Okay, I'll 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 pass on, I I didn't see it, but yes, Mayor, I think that's it. Uh, I yield my pretty time.
Trusty Franklin. Check one zero five, eight, five, seven, County of Will, uh twenty-two, seven, oh, seven. It's 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 duplicated twice, I wanna make sure that's not a mistake.
Okay, let's see which one you.
Together.
One zero five, eight, five, seven, and the consecutive one.
Exactly, yep. Now, now we're on the same page.
Okay, and the other one is what?
Yeah, there's a very next one, so it's five, eight.
Yeah, there there are two pay- they charge us, those are two payments. Uh, they're uh, yeah, but there it has the same vendor number, so I do believe it could could have just been an error. But I got a question mark by that myself. And I only saw one when we were in fact uh reviewing the invoices to date. But I'll make sure tomorrow, there's one invoice, they have the same vendor number. But they were uh printed out, so I'll I'll check uh to make sure. But then there was a, we were in the arrears one month. So, let me check tomorrow to make sure that it shows uh two separate, uh we pay this every month. And I think we were behind, but I'll check to reconfirm.
See if it's for two separate months, okay. And then um check one zero five, eight, six, four, says front door lock replacement. Can I have an extra?
Yeah, okay, okay, you know what that is? It's a, is that for? Okay, you you see that, you want me to tell you what that is for?
Yes, please.
Okay. We have an issue with um coming in the second door at the village hall. It was not locking, it was not latching, not any. So, they replaced. Hello?
Okay, sorry, I I got disconnected for a second, I apologize.
Okay, okay, so what that that was, uh it's just not one thing, it's a combination of bills. It's a combination of them. They uh replaced um uh a door lock on the second door at the village hall. The uh the back door was open. They put uh when we got the facility turned over from uh Clorox at the start of construction, the the office across from Ms. Keely didn't have um a a lock on it. They had to put that lock on it. So, it was a combination of four items. It was just, we didn't replace any door, we replaced door locks and knobs. So, the same doors are everywhere you look. So, it's just the way it was worded. So, no doors have been replaced. They put front door lock, we're talking about forty-four, the back, the front. And if trustee uh Brooks, you look at your invoice, you'll see there are about three pages. And it's a combination of services. And they, what they do is they use one title to put on these bills rather than putting multi-titles.
Okay, so it's a combination of services.
It's a combination.
Trusty Brooks, you have that breakdown?
Well, you can come in and you could see it, I'll give you a copy, I have no problem.
It's probably in all this this bill that they gave us, but uh I I was, I'm I was. I'm also, I was there some of the times when uh that and when it was being done. Uh, village manager had discussed with me, so I'm aware, I was aware of what it was, cause.
Okay.
Cause I was asking some questions, so I got an explanation for it as well, Don.
Alright, thank you. I appreciate it. Uh, one zero five, nine, one, six, one zero five, nine, one, six. Southwestern Illinois College, Byron Miles, is that a scholarship for a a young person in the village?
Uh, yes, that's under the uh scholarship program that's.
Okay, perfect, perfect. And then the last one I have, the last one I have is one zero five, nine, two, eight, logos.
Uh, yes, hold on, I'll tell you exactly. Nine, zero, eight, uh.
One zero five, nine, two, eight, one zero five, nine, two, eight.
It's Vernon Mays.
Oh, this is Vernon and May. Okay, logos. Are you, they did, that was a combination. They did, uh if you look at ninety Town Center, you could see there where the uh it put up the window, the one see-through. You could see there where the, uh, it put up the window, the one see-through. And, uh, and that, they put those up and they put, uh, the one-way, uh, uh. Strippings on the town center, you have to go over there and you will see exactly. Okay, that's what they did.
Thank you, I yield my time.
Actually, uh, Madam Village Manager, you may wanna check with tru- uh, trustee Franklin. That Miles might be, um, Officer Miles for retraining.
Oh, okay, I thought you, yeah, that, that. The, you're talking about, was that particular building the mandatory training?
Correct, for, for, for officers who have only a cer- because he had only a certain amount of hours before he got to University Park. We agreed to train him to be a full-time status, uh, officer in our, in our, uh, police department. That, that's.
That was a part of his contract, okay. All right.
He's one of entry level folk.
Byron, Byron, uh, Byron Miles, okay.
Yeah.
All right, thank you, I appreciate that.
Okay.
And, uh, trustee, do you have the backup invoices to your, to yours? Because, uh, there were backup invoices that we did provide, it was a lot to download, but it was there.
All right. All right, Madam Kirk, it sounds like a roll call.
Trustee Williams. Vote no. Trustee Brooks. We're talking about paying the bills.
Yeah.
Right.
Vote no.
Trustee Jenkins-Bale.
Vote no.
Trustee Franklin.
Oh, sorry.
Trustee Bolton. Trustee McMullin.
Vote aye.
Mayor Rudens.
Vote aye to pay the bills.
Votes approved.
Okay, are there any reports of any officers, anybody like to make reports right now? Make a brief, because we're gonna have a brief executive. Yes, trustee McMullin.
Can I, um, this is for the residents, and this is just a little commentary, my own commentary, I can't speak for anyone else. I've been a trustee for three years now, going on four years, and I have an opportunity to work with, uh, two administrations. And I do believe that this village is moving forward. And we are moving forward as a village, so the, uh. Amazon project is not perfect, the, um, the, um. Project itself is called a question on many things, but as a village, I think is best. Is best for our interest to move along with that, and I do believe we made the right decision. To back the Amazon project, I know that Moni has one, and, um. And Markham has one going up, and I know the village of Madison has one also, and we have one. But the parking lot and Amazon and everything else, this village is moving forward. And I don't take any of this stuff lightly, because I've been a trustee for a while, and this is what I wanna do. And if I had to do it all over again, we did not come up with the Amazon project, but we are backing it. I can only speak for myself, but we didn't come up with the Amazon project, it may not be perfect, but I think it's good for our village. Because we have an opportunity for most people to get a job through Amazon. The ones that are not professional, like the lawyers and the doctors and the things of that nature. But I do believe if they want to, they can work for University Park and they can work for Amazon. It's not the best company, but it's one of the biggest companies in the world. So by electing to have Amazon in our community, I think it's a plus, uh, plus for us. It may not be perfect, but it's a plus for us, and I think we are, as a village, we are moving forward. And if I had to do it all over again, I know I would endorse the project itself. Uh, because I think it's necessary for us to, um, move up to the twenty-first century. And, uh, move this village forward, and, uh, I really believe that the project with the pavement and, uh, town center is necessary. I believe it was an eyesore for many, many years, I think we are doing the citizens of this community justice. And, um, and this is the sort of thing that we need to have done in this village. Because it's been an eyesore for so long, and we are doing it right now. And I think overall, it may not be to the liking of everybody in this village, but I think it's the right thing to do. And I stand on the, on the right side of history with this Amazon project. Although we didn't conceptualize it, but we endorsed it, I do believe, thank you.
Thank you, trustee McMullin, thank you so much, thank you so much, good positive platform. A- anybody else have any reports or, or, or comments?
Can I come with a negative one?
No. No, I'm gonna mute you.
Trustee Madam Kirk, you had a comment, then trustee Brooks, then trustee Jenkins-Bale.
Just briefly, again, I would like to thank trustee, trustee Jenkins-Bale. For her efforts in feeding the people and organizing, uh, the food drive. Uh, it was a week ago, this past Saturday, great job, lots of people were out, and she continues to do that. So I applaud you for all your humanitarian efforts. And on that note, we as a people, everybody. One of the greatest tools that we have at our disposal. Is something that many people died for, and that's your right. And I feel your obligation to vote. I will not try and tell you who you should vote for, but I will say, you must vote. We have to use this greatest tool that we have to change. Because we will forever stay where we are, a forgotten community, a forgotten person. People, if we don't vote. Governor State University is the voting place for early voting for here. University Park residents, and I must say, the crowd's not really long. I see you trustee McMullin, I voted there yesterday.
Yeah, I voted there Monday at ten o'clock.
And I was in and out in twenty minutes, so it doesn't take a lot of your time. But it's the most powerful thing that you can do. On another note. Um, I was fortunate enough that it kind of fell into our hands, but this Saturday. The village will be hosting a food drive, a food giveaway. We have been able to secure twelve boxes of food. So we're going to be at the town center Saturday morning. Uh, before nine o'clock, the trucks should be there by nine o'clock. So we're going to need, all of us, we, the elected appointed officials. Committee and commission members who want to volunteer because of COVID. We have to be socially distanced, but we've got twelve hundred boxes of food to try and distribute. So your help in any way you can is much appreciated, most it'll be is a couple of hours.
How many, how many boxes of food, Madam Kirk?
Twelve hundred.
Twelve hundred, awesome, awesome.
And it's, it's mostly vegetables, fruits and vegetables, meat, eggs, so it's, it's really nice. It's great, and this is in partnership with, uh. Oh, what's the name of the church in Monstra, in, in Indiana?
Family Christian Center.
Yeah, yeah.
Thank you, Family Christian Center, yeah, so.
Reverend Monsi Storch.
Yeah.
Yes, so get the word out to everybody, because we want to get rid of. And be, this is a blessing to us, we want to be a blessing to twelve hundred people. That's this coming Saturday. Okay.
Thank you.
Hey, i- it's, it's pretty rewarding to get out there and, and see the faces, trustee Jenkins-Bale?
Uh, I wanna just ta- take the time to basically thank everyone that support me, supports me with everything that I try to do. To bring things to the community, you don't know trustees, what it means to me. Um, I am so grateful to be working with a group of, of people that are, are just as caring as I am. You know, they may not say it all the time, but they are, and they are concerned for every resident in this village. Um, our activity rate is up extremely high, and we need to be safe. But I do also want to address, um, I wanna pick, piggyback a little bit off of trustee McMullin. Um, Amazon, it was not a perfect deal, nothing in life is perfect, I've never seen anything perfect. But what it was, was necessary, it was necessary for us to move this village forward. We may not be in agreeance with each other, but one thing we need to always constantly do is stop tearing each other down. To get where we're trying to go, now, you know, what I see is a village moving forward. I see parking lots being done, I see trees on the way of being cut down. Uh, Rico Farm is on the way back, we have people looking at our village and knowing that our village is, is going to be one of the. The, in my opinion, one of the best places to live in the Southland area. But what I, you know, and I refuse to address any negative, any negative things being said about this community by anyone. And I want you guys to also know that, um, that, uh, we have to stick together. And not just as elected officials, but also as members of a community that is sought after by other people that want it. These are things that we need to take into consideration when we're tearing down each other and addressing each other in negative ways. And so I am, and who am I, who are we as elected officials to say that Amazon is a sweatshop? And Amazon is actually feeding people's families, they're making sure they eat, they're paying more than McDonald's. They're paying more than Jules, and when you started Amazon, first day one is health insurance. Health insurance is what we need during this COVID crisis. So my thing is, is that when we're making these accusations, we need to take into consideration the whole. Not ourselves and what we want, but the whole, everyone that is involved in it, the eight hundred priority jobs that are gonna come with it. That is gonna keep roofs over people's head and, and food on people's tables, this is a different time. This is not the way it used to be, it may never go back to that, some of us may have, may see hard times that we've never seen before. But we need to also understand that what people choose to do with their lives, educated or uneducated. As long as it's an honest day's work, it's an honest day's pay, and we shouldn't judge them. And so that is the end of my report, and that's all I have to say, and I thank you guys, please be safe. Also, we're having a, um, a, a, a COVID-free ride drive-through, I'm hosting a drive-through with Senator Patrick Joyce. Uh, Fright Fest at Rico Farm Friday night between the hours of five and, and eight-thirty. And also FCC, one of the guys that, that is part of the productions at FCC is helping us put this production on. So it should be wonderful, and these are things that I wanted to let you know, thank you.
Thank you. Ma'am, ma'am, oh, go ahead, trustee Franklin.
Go ahead, trustee Brooks, like trustee Brooks, go ahead, trustee Brooks.
Already, go ahead.
Yeah.
Okay, all right, uh, mayor and board of trustees, uh, I just, uh, actually, if the village manager. Uh, she might be able to help me on one of the items I have tonight, because she had a manager's, you know, it would be under manager's report. But I wanna say to the general public that, uh, since we have last met, since my last trustee report. I will give you a quick, um, um, Aqua, uh, update. Many of you have received a ninety percent, uh, uh, maybe a. What you would call a robocall with a ninety percent percentile reading on the latest test levels. I would like you to understand that, uh, please do not get that confused of what's about to happen or what is going to happen. That is just strictly from what we have understood in a recent phone call that was very productive with the mayor. The village manager and myself this past Thursday, uh, with the Attorney General's Office. We're speaking once again when I talked about legal terms. So I would like you to know on that call that we wanted to make sure that the residents were not put into fear. Of that now that they, you've been getting robocalls, that you're in a night, that Aqua has been testing at a ninety percent percentile. And, uh, and it get more complicated, so I'm not gonna say anymore because it will confuse you. But we want you to know that at the end of the day, we are still in a do not consume advisory state. So please, continue to do what you have been doing and, uh, allow, allow the process to continue. Also to let you know in that meeting, uh, some frustrations was indeed, uh, vented, I will say that. Uh, if the mayor chooses to say in his report, but I will say that there was some frustrations that was vented. Because things are not moving fast enough for the residents when it comes to Aqua water. We understand about the water delivery, the ma- uh, Madam Village Manager, uh, she had, uh, her complaint. As well as I got one tonight, uh, as, uh, I want to go right into Mr. Stewart of Harvest Lane. Uh, if the attorney is listening, uh, when I yield, Mr. Attorney, if you can just help me a little bit on this. Because as we continue to talk, we have a resident that cannot be before us and could not articulate it. But I will say, as you know, it is this time of year where I get to meet a lot of residents and I'm talking to a lot of them. And when I say meet, some of them I know already, and some of them are new to this village. So what I express right now is pretty much, uh, how they feel, and I love to feel firsthand, uh, of how someone feels. When it comes to living in University Park, Mr. Stewart that lives on Harvest Lane. Uh, the mayor, myself, and the village manager has been trying to handle, uh, this, uh, it, it started off minor. But now it's to the point that he himself is frustr- frustrated. Mr. Stewart, uh, tested his water on seven, ten, nineteen, and then here it is on July eighteenth. He receives, he doesn't receive the letter, they automatically start charging the water. So I want everyone to know, if you have encountered this, please feel free, do not hesitate to call me at seven oh eight. Oh, Lord, what's my number?
Seven oh eight, six nine, nine six.
No, 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 not that one, Curtis, not that one. Look for me, look for me on, I, I'll have, I'll remember it in a second, I just kinda like in a brain freeze right now. But please get, uh, please get to me, notify me, that way when we talk, when the mayor, the village manager, myself. Usually I try to handle that role, if you have not received the letter, or you didn't even know, or that you were getting charged. We're trying to make sure that, uh, uh, you know, or that, you know, have something in your hand that you indeed. Was taken off the do not consume list. Mr. Stewart is one of the many residents on a block where water is being used, he leaves. His neighbor's not being charged with water, but yet he is. That's a situation that indeed Aqua, we're gonna try to see if we can resolve it. The mayor did, uh, kinda reach out and say, we're gonna try to resolve it in a civil suit. That's one of the many things and demands that we were talking about, but this is one of the frustrations that he had. When they come, because it should not be happening, and if, uh, uh, attorney, if I'm correct, let's make sure, uh, like I said, when we finish. Because I'm sure he's watching us tonight, his watches, his wife is watching him tonight, uh, coach, uh, uh, fr- uh, excuse me. Trustee Franklin knows, uh, Coach Stewart, as well as, uh, the mayor, and he's, his, him and his family are great people. But they do not deserve to be treated this way among the many other residents that sit in this village. So what I wanted to be known is that everybody, you're in the same boat, and, uh, Mr. Stewart wanted to. Wanted the general public and the board to know tonight that he is among many who have spoken. That are in this situation where they're being charged, but the person right next door is, is not being charged. And actually to the point that we see, as I came through many, uh, parts of the village, people are watering their grass six and seven hours a day. And so how does that make Mr. Stewart feel to come home, and as he said, he wanted everyone to know, and, um, and we're gonna express this. And as he said, he wanted everyone to know, and, um, and we're gonna express this when we can, that his grass is brown, but everybody else's is green. And that's unfair for him to work all day and come home. And he works with kids, and when I say he works with kids, he's another, uh, uh, like Coach Franklin. He works with kids and he deserves. So if we can, uh, get, uh, work hard on that, and if we can, uh, we will do it. But he also wants to express something that we need to entertain trustees. He wants it to be known that he understands, and he's, he agrees pretty much what trustee McMullin said. But he has an important point. Amstead Road, we gotta work harder to make sure everyone knows when you turn on Amstead Road to go, uh, coming from Western, it's bumpy. It's bumpy to the point that everybody, at least on Harvest Lane and lives in that Farmview area, they're complaining. How do I know they're not lying? I'm one that drive on the opposite side when I make that turn too. So we need to make, uh, we, we gotta figure something out where we have to, uh, shift our dollars. I know it's COVID nineteen, but when someone like Coach Stewart, a resident, like many of them have been, uh, working hard and, and voting for us. And he made it clear, he voted for all of us up here, and we owe this to him. We don't need to give him our opinion. We need to represent him totally when it comes to this village. I also want to, two things. Last one, I wanna say, I spoke at the Gloria Taylor Foundation, and it was about being a police officer and a politician. I want to encourage trustees, if we have something else come up, that I definitely would invite you to it. Uh, uh, maybe the next one is about being mayor. I'm gonna check with the college bound students. Uh, we can do it, uh, and make sure, and being, being a clerk, cause one thing that I wanna make a point, the reason why I brought this up, there were a lot of girls in the audience that day. And what I see is that we have, by example, and the best thing that I love about it was that, guess what I found out at the end of the night? Most of the kids, Gloria Tell- uh, Gloria Taylor Foundation was from University Park. So if they watching, I want you all to give them a wave. I told them that on YouTube Live, let them know that we do care and that the process that we up here, that we all can get along. Yeah, as, as I close, Mr. Mayor, I just wanna say, look, I'm not here to insult anyone intelligence. But I wanna say also, I wore a flag on my uniform for fifteen years. And since then, also, my family has fought in every war. I have uncle that was in special forces. And actually, I was trying to see, cause the mayor, I knew the mayor was in airborne, I was trying to see the child link up in the one oh one. And when the one oh one came out of C one thirties, and that man along many other men who fought in Vietnam told me, there are moments where you get spit on and called names when they came home. And I had had those moments too as a police officer. Now, I may not all agree with what happened, but I tell you this. I'm always for someone come, something coming to University Park. And I made my position clear, and I closed it out with saying this, because believe me, trustee McMullin ain't walking with me this year. I'm by myself. But one thing is for sure, is that every decision that I make, I'm gonna make it for the sake of us together, as I said. I'm for development, but let us make it together. And for that, Mr. Mayor, I yield my time because I will not insult intelligence of the people at University Park. I will only hear what they do and make the best of it. Attorney Miller, is it anything we can, uh, uh, or can we talk about it later with Mr. Stewart? Cause he's gonna wanna respond to this.
So, so the minutes will reflect that. Can you guys hear me?
Yes.
Okay. The minutes will reflect and trustee Brooks' report that he made a special request that the, um, at the next meeting with, between the, um, village, um, for lack of a better term, the, the village, uh, personnel involved in the Aqua matter, that they addressed the concerns of Mr. Stewarton, and that he's requested that, um, that any residents with similar concerns contact him so that their specific concerns can be addressed. Really, at that point, that's what we need to do, but at least the minutes will reflect that the, that whoever's on the board committee in regards to the meetings with Aqua will address Mr. Stewarton's concerns. I'll have you give the address. You can give the address and the other information for Mr. Stewart into the mayor and yourself, since you guys are involved with that. Um, and also we can, you know, contact whoever with the attorney general's office. I don't, I don't think, I know the mayor knows one of our former attorneys, Robert, works there, but I don't, I don't think, I don't think Robert's involved in that Aqua litigation, but we'll come find out and go from there.
Okay, and my number, sorry everyone, nine two one four five seven seven, seven oh eight, nine two one four five seven seven. Just like attorney Miller said, we wanna get to the bottom of this, uh, uh. I do know that, uh, the mayor, myself, and the village manager, we're trying to resolve this. And if I'm not mistaken, when we did bring this before, this is not the first person, this is about the second or third. Uh, if, correct me if I'm wrong, mayor, uh, uh, madam village manager, we were told there is a clause, once again, to keep, and the mayor, he made it very clear, sometimes he don't know who he talking to because it, it seems so difficult to get justice to the people at University Park. That's why we have to take another route. But if you had your water tested before November first, you have the right to have your water tested again. I, I believe that's it. And so many people that, that had to complain that is bringing this to us, all their water was tested immediately after we called the town hall meeting with Aqua. So we wanna try to get this together because here it is, the letter that, uh, I'm affording to the mayor and the village manager so we can have it for Thursday. Uh, it said that, uh, it, it, my big question is, and, and maybe attorney Miller, you may wanna, we may want to, you know, kinda have an opinion about this, but if someone allow water to sit stagnant for six hours, let's say they didn't let it six for six, six, six hours, and accident happened, and it comes back no lead, or however it happens, um, you know, what if that person is consuming lead because they made a mistake on how they self-test the water? In which we had a lot of residents do that. So mayor, I yield my time as we continue to fight for the people every Thursday. I just wish some of the people had a tape recorder to listen, especially this last, this last Thursday, we fought, and I just wish sometime the people can hear how we, uh, go back and forth.
Thank you trustee Brooks. Trustee Franklin and trustee Bolden.
Yeah, so, uh, I'll be brief as possible. I wanna first acknowledge that we are on the brink of, uh, one of the most important elections of many of our lives, and I wanna make sure, um, that we're being mindful, that our vote is extremely important. Um, I wanna take the time to talk to my generation, to the millennials, because I've talked to a lot of people in the community who feels as though, uh, they're gonna sit out this time on voting, because they're not enthused about either candidate. Or some of them just really don't feel like their vote is important or their vote counts, so.
Talk to them, talk to them.
I wanna take the time now to make sure that you guys realize that we're, we're in a country that was built on suppressing our vote because that's how important our vote is. The very first election of the United States was George Washington in seventeen eighty-nine, and only six percent of the residents were allowed to vote. And those were only white men who owned property. So from the beginning of the time, they've made an effort to suppress our vote. And by time eighteen seventy came, when the fifteenth amendment was finally, uh, rectified or ratified and allowed black men to vote and take office, this became very intimidating to them because as black men begin to sit in Congress, you know how black men are, we're very charismatic, intelligent, and resilient. So this posed a fear in itself. So I want you to also know that before the Million Man March and any other march on Washington, and I, this is for when I hear women tell, black women tell me they're not voting, the first march on our nation's capital was the Women's Right Movement. When the women were fighting, when women were fighting for their right to vote, and many of our grandmothers and mothers have fought their entire life for the nineteenth amendment. And, and we have to remember that after the reconstruction period came, a- a- almost a hundred years of Jim Crow, where states began to strategic, strategically find ways to get around the fifteenth amendment to suppress our vote. This came through, through different, different things like, uh, the poll taxes and, and them having literacy tests, but really wasn't. These were actually tests that, that the average person with a doctorate degree couldn't pass. And then the whole disenfranchisement movement to where they began to strip our right to vote away from us because they set up laws to make sure that they capture us and it's. So I wanna make sure I take the time to talk to the millennials and say that your vote is extremely important, your vote is extremely powerful because history provides a long history of suppressing our vote. And the Voting Rights Act of sixteen ninety-five is, is, is truly, truly revolutionary. So I want you all to take advantage of your vote. Don't sit out this time, and believe in your vote. My second thing, uh, second thing I wanna address is that, um, we're gonna be hosting a community technology training for our seniors. Uh, this is a way to acknowledge that communication is extremely important. I've been talking to a lot of seniors in the community who have, who've been having issues with knowing about things that are going on because they're having issues navigating the website. They're having issues knowing how to log into, uh, Zoom and different things like that. So we're gonna put together a workshop that's gonna actually start on Monday, November second, and it's gonna be a, a four-week workshop. And we're going to, uh, make sure that we're equipping, equipping our seniors with the technology skills that they need, uh, especially, uh, considering that we're living in, living in this era of COVID, and technology has become extremely more important. So week one will cover basic device use. Week two will cover social media. Week three will cover Zoom, and week four will be a, will be a review of all the things that have been covered. Uh, this is at no cost to the village, and we also gonna provide a graduation for the seniors that attend this workshop. So all the seniors out there, if you're having issues with Zoom, I know we're doing family reunions through Zoom, we're doing church through Zoom. We're doing a lot of things through technology. We wanna provide a training for you, so make sure you sign up. We're gonna offer two sessions, uh, uh, twelve, a twelve, a twelve o'clock noon session, and also a five PM session. So all the seniors out there who have issues with working their smartphones, who have issues with logging into Zoom, who has, has issues, we're gonna teach you what we call senior surfing, all these things that you, we really need to know in two thousand twenty moving forward. I want you to make sure that you sign up and make sure that you, uh, make sure that you be a part of it. To sign up, you'll simply call five three four three two one one and reserve your spot. Uh, we're gonna make sure that we're, we're putting things in place as far as social distances and make sure this is a safe event. But we wanna invest in our seniors, so please take advantage. That concludes my report. God bless.
Trust, trustee Franklin, what's the age of this senior citizen?
Right, right. What's the age?
So if you're having problems with.
No, 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 age, age.
Age.
Fifty-five and o- older.
Oh, you said an age, yeah, fifty-five and up, fifty-five and up, absolutely.
Okay, Karen.
And what's, what's that number again?
That number is seven zero, seven zero eight, five three four, three two one one, and reserve your spot. And just so you know, that there's, there's twenty, there's twenty spots available for each session. And when you see, uh, when you, when you learn more about the options, you'll know, you'll find that there's gonna be a Monday and a Thursday option. The Monday option is twelve to one, and the Thursday option is five to six. We're gonna provide laptops, but you're encouraged also to bring your own laptops and bring your own smartphones, and we're gonna get you ready for, we're gonna get you ready to communicate and to do everything that you need to do. You won't have to have your grandchildren or your sons logging into your Zoom no more. You won't have to have your children teaching you how to get into Facebook and navigate. You'll be able to navigate the University Park website. You'll be able to get on the University Park YouTube to watch the board meetings. You'll be able to join in live on YouTube to watch the board meetings. All these things we're gonna cover to make sure our seniors are equipped to stay in full commu- of communication and, uh, are aware of things that are going on in the village and in the world as well.
Fantastic, trustee Franklin, fantastic.
Trustee Franklin, are you making fun of me because I'm over fifty-five? Huh? Are you making fun of me? That's not nice.
Trustee Shirley?
Yes. Yes. Now trustee Franklin, I, I really appreciate that. Uh, can trustees be at that, at your workshops?
Absolutely. You're more than welcome.
Okay. Thank, cause when I first saw that, I said, mm, I need to be in there, cause I've been on the phone with, uh, AT&T and Comcast, and they tell me to do what you're talking about. So I, I, I will be in one of those workshops for sure, but just some of the basic stuff. But the other thing I wanted to comment on is the voting, like, uh, you and, uh, clerk Diaz said. I also have voted, I did the vote by mail, but Sunday I had the privilege of working with, uh, going with First Baptist Church and New Faith, and I'm not sure, but it's, I think it was all the churches, um, uh, faith movers, I'm not sure if they were part of it. We had a caravan. We met at the church. We had our caravan taken to voters, taking people out to vote. One section went, one group went to, um, Joliet to vote, and then some went to Park Forest. So I encourage everyone to vote. There was a lady, uh, one of the trustees from Matson there, uh, doing a countess to people coming in, and this was in Park Forest. I had voted already, but I went just as, you know, just as to support everyone else in the caravan. So my, my thought as well is get out and vote. Your vote does count. And we, and like you said, with the, with the things, way things are right now, we, every vote counts. And we know here in University Park especially, one vote can make a difference. So your vote does count. And I just have a prime example. My daughter is a, um, home care, healthcare nurse right now. And she has a patient that, uh, is on Obamacare. And she was complaining and, uh, complaining and complaining about everything. So my daughter said, well, you, you, you well enough, you can go out and vote. Oh, no, I don't vote. I haven't voted for years. My daughter said, I just stopped right there because it just shows that, you know, how some people are. If it wasn't for Obamacare, I wouldn't be in this house taking care of you right now. So people need to stop and think what that vote, and in the village, you know, a village of University Park, we know every vote counts. So I encourage everyone to get out and vote. And also on the, some of the negativity that's going around in University Park, you, what you don't seem to realize is that these negative comments are hurting the village, and it also hinders economic development. Cause we've had some people that have backed out because of some of the articles and everything that's been put out about University Park. And I'm not saying hide anything. We need to be very transparent, and I'm all for that. But just, you know, kinda, just, just do what you wanna do. Thank you.
Okay.
Trustee Williams, go ahead.
Yes, I wanna say, uh, I thank all the trustees here. I think that you all look out for this village, you know, and that's good. And I, I really too do believe it. I appreciate that. I wanna let the people know that we all here, we live here too. Just remember that. Everything that you get out here and you hear, or you read, it's not true. Everything is not true. Nothing. I don't believe anybody think anytime they hear something or, or read something that is true. This village is trying to move up. We're trying to develop it. We live here. We want to, we want this to grow, you know? We don't want to sit dormant. We want to improve where we live. So remember that. Get out here and vote. Get out here and vote for the people that you wanna vote for. But please vote. We need that. That's all I have to say.
Thank you, uh, trustee Williams. Madam clerk, did you have your hand raised? All right, I, I, I'll close off and I, I'll, I'll make some brief comments. Is that everybody, everyone have their turn to give their comments? One, one of the things, and, and let's just talk about the Amazon project. It's such an unfortunate thing that there's such negativity when it comes to regarding minority communities such as University Park, the village of Madison, and the village of Markham. It seems like there's not a problem when they're developing in other communities, but when now the Southland and three predominantly African-American communities have the opportunity to have anchors in their community of such like Amazon, that drives employment opportunity, drives economic development, and it drives industry to build around Amazon to feed the masses of people that come on the continual basis. But what's, what's amazing to me is they never mentioned the new facility in Shanahan. They never mentioned the new facility in Elmwood Park. So is that why? And is that the reason why? Because now the African-American communities in the Southland are starting to get economic empowerment and starting to advance, and we're starting to reach our peaks and our goals? Just think about that. Just a fool for thought. They only talk about University Park, predominantly African-American, middle class. The village of Madison, predominantly African-American, middle class. And the village of Markham, predominantly African-American and middle class, that are striving to move things in a different direction as we move and march toward the third airport. So just a fool for thought. Why do they only target African-American communities when they say Amazon, but when it comes to other communities, it's a fine deal? Just some fool for thought. The second thing, we've done a phenomenal job. The second thing, we've done a phenomenal job on catching up to speed with what we've been doing. As a new administration, we came in, our, our bond rating was a minus thirty. Now our bond rating is almost to a positive fifty. So we're making extremely good progress. Uh, we didn't have audits come in. We were mis, we were led to think that audits were done. Since the new administration and our seventeen months with the, with the support of the, uh, other administration that was left over, we were able to complete fourteen, fifteen, sixteen, seventeen and eighteen and nineteen audits will be completed by November of two thousand twenty. So we're doing a phenomenal job getting our fiscal responsibility back again, getting our books even, being able to procure grants and move things ahead. We've got major projects still underway, trying to get things done before the cold weather and construction season ends, such as the, the metric crossing at Governor's Highway and repaying the Farmview Road and to get some trees cut down in the Village of University Park. These things are not neglected by any member of this Board of Trustees. There is a process. We are not a Band-Aid administration. We are a permanent fix. We're gonna be fixing things and moving forward with a vision for the future because we're not gonna always gonna be here. But there has to be mechanisms in place for progress, uh, for the millennials and the next generation after them. And Aqua Water, hmm, five hundred and one days today. Five hundred and one days of Aqua Water. Unreal when the statement was made by their president, Mr. Blanchett. This may go three or four months and we will resolve this problem. Well, unfortunately, Mr. Blanchett has failed short on his promises. And we will not stop until this problem is resolved. And when I say the problem resolved, we still are fighting for pipe replacement, endowment funds, community engagement and variety of other things. There's still an active lawsuit and there's other things to come. So Aqua Water, whether they say it's ninety percent or not, we are not released, we are not pleased. And so the Illinois EPA says that we are free and we can use the water without any restrictions. That means we will not have to run the water for two to three minutes prior to using it. That means we will not have to run it through a filter. Until that happens, we are not complacent, we are not finished and the fight has just begun because we will bring resolve to this matter. And again, I must thank the residents for their extreme patience and their endurance during a water crisis, a COVID nineteen and civil unrest. And thank you so much to the Board of Trustees who I know in their minds and their heart want to make this a better place to live and make university a destination in the South suburbs. So I want to just yield my time. Thank you for your time. And before I leave, this Saturday, there's a lot of activities going on. We've got the food drive with twelve hundred boxes of food on, on that Saturday morning. We've got the, the, the Halloween thing on Friday night, the Trustee Jenkins is doing. And then on Saturday, we have the Trunk or Treat at Ninety Town Center, which is completely free and to close out the drive-in season, where there's a free drive-in movie to all the residents in University Park. So enjoy it. God, looks like the good Lord has blessed us with the great forecast of sunny and sixty-degree weather for Saturday. So let's continue to move this community forward. Let's be engaged, get to know your neighbors, continue to stay safe because this COVID is not anything to play with. It does not discriminate. And, and that was it on my report. And I, I got a feeling that we got Manager Ernestine out here and we didn't get her report. Manager Ernestine, are you there? Well, maybe she's not there.
I think she was having some battery issues at one point. Okay.
She's, she's there. Hold on, I'm gonna unmute her. One second.
Okay, so I'm gonna conclude my report and there's some good news that the manager is gonna probably announce after we come out of executive session. And thank you for your time, your patience and your cooperation. We're asking for your continued support. And as all the trustees alluded to, it's extremely important that you go out and cast your ballot. And when it comes to cast those ballots, do you know the candidates you're gonna choose? Judge them on their work and their performance, not their popularity, not their, their campaign or anything. Judge them on their performance. Let their work speak for their actions. And that's how I vote. So again, Madam Ernestine, let's come on, let's make it short. Three to four bullet points, please, because we've got a brief executive session and we've got action to come out of executive session. So let's, let's kind of move on, Manager.
Okay, these are very important. I'll make them short, but it's about six bullet points, but they're short. Old Forge Lane, uh, bid comes in October the thirtieth. And I wanted to alert the board because when it comes in, uh, we need to get this done before the season is open. And I'm hoping we can look forward to a special meeting. Okay, Farmview bids are expected in, um, November the fourth. The construction season is still open. We'll still be able to rally the crew, the contractors, and we'll be ready to move on that as well. Uh, also, I want to mention, uh, Trustee Franklin, uh, the senior, uh, uh, project at Ninety Town Center, uh, will be, uh, they will be practicing social distancing. That's why the space is limited. I, I know we've talked about this, but that will happen. As a result of that, there have been several people now that the, the, uh, the dr- parking lot has been paved. There's one particular, and I will respond to her, is asking us to rent the parking lot to allow, uh, a church, uh, outdoor church to take place. The village has not been openly renting its, uh, areas because we would have to have someone there to assure that compliance is in order. So what we're not doing is allowing public spaces to be rented by, um, other than village associated and or staff. But even when we do that, we have to social, uh, distance and I will refer to that. Also, I just want to mention that we received a petition from, um, uh, a leasing company, an owner of a series of, uh, co-op in University Park where their residents have, uh, Russet has petitioned that the village actually repair their streets. And, um, based on the regulation of this municipality, we cannot publicly use public funds to, in fact, to do that. Now, if the village board decides that they want to have the village board to let it for bids or whatever the case may be, then this entity must pay the village to do that and we not concur any expenses. And so what they did is they provided a petition of thirty-two residents asking the village to do all their internal streets in terms of repair. And I just want them to understand if the village does not publicly own these streets, we cannot use public funds to repair those streets. That's the other thing. The other thing is, um, Farmview, uh, uh, the bids are out for Farmview, uh, Lane. The bids are out and they're expected in on, uh, November fourth. So that's another item we have to make a part of an anticipated special meeting. The fifty-fifty sidewalk program, we've had the engineers to, uh, make the recommendation for the contractor. This is the second time, the first time we received no bids. The second time we did receive, um, I do believe one bidder. And the law after twice, you receive, uh, bidders, you could make the recommendation if they fit the guidelines of the sets of bids. In fact, we did receive a recommendation from the, um, engineers. There are citizens waiting to get their sidewalks done at the rate of fifty-fifty. We have the application out. We have received some applications in. The minute we alert it and make it public that the board has approved it, we can then move forward and it's based on the number that comes in. It's a fifty-fifty, meaning that the village is fifty thousand. The citizens have to participate fifty thousand. When that one hundred thousand dollar is gone, then that is all. And, uh, we'll look at possibly coming up with a match next year to do some as well. But, uh, also there will be some, uh, tree removal this year. Uh, we've been trying to get money for these projects not to impose on personal taxes, real estate taxes of, of homeowners, and that's what we're, um, looking at. Also, I want to mention that, uh, Fire Station Number Two, we do have a budget under the, um, the impact dollars. Three of the four doors are down at Fire Station Number Two. So there's an emergency situation in terms of entrances and exit of fire, a truck, um, as it relates to Fire Station Number Two. And, um, also there is water that is tremendously coming in Fire Station Number Two. We need to, um, have that done. But those two things we need to have done immediately. We will be coming forth, um, with bids on the other rehab. We've already got it approved to do the remediation because the mold in that place is unbelievable. But in order to have the mold, uh, removed, we will have to rent a tentative, um, trailer, uh, absolutely no more than a month. That's included in the budget. So the occupant, um, uh, for the night shifts will stay in the trailer. Uh, and that, um, this work will be done in thirty days. So we got all of that lined up. But I just want to mention to the board, there are two emergency things that have to be done immediately. And that's the fire doors. As I said, three out of four are down. And the roof, uh, it's raining and it's snowing and it's becoming to really become an issue. We can get mold remediation done, but if the, the roof continues to leak and whatever, we got a problem. We got the recommendation for the in, from the engineers on both the roof and the fire doors. It's a matter of ultimately getting it done, uh, and approved by board, hopefully through a special meeting. So we're looking at, uh, the two issues with the fire station, the roof, the doors, the fifty-fifty side, uh, sidewalk program. Uh, we're looking at Farmview, uh, and we're looking at Old Forge Lane. All of those entities need to be considered very soon. Uh, pressively, trustee clerk, uh, not later than sometime during next week to get this done. So we can get started on that. And based on that, uh, Mayor Board, um, I will, um, end my report then.
Mayor? Hello?
He's muted. One second.
All right, I, I'm. I know, a motion should go into executive session, Trustee Williams. Yeah, well, we won't be long.
Yeah.
So, so do we stay on this Zoom or sign out?
Hold on, Madam Clerk, go back into regular session.
Okay, Trustee Williams.
Present.
Trustee Brooks.
Present.
Trustee Jenkins-Bell.
Present.
Trustee Franklin.
Present.
Trustee Bowden.
Present.
Trustee McMullin, he left, right?
Yes. Yeah, he went to bed, yeah.
Mayor Rudius.
Here, present.
Okay. We've also.
Manager, I understand.
Manager.
Oh, and me.
Madam Clerk.
Yes.
Okay.
Okay. An audit's approving and authorizing the execution of a short-term lease agreement for the property commonly referred to as eight hundred, University Parkway, University Park, Illinois, six, zero, four, eight, four, dash, twenty-eight hundred. Is there a motion?
A motion.
Motion by Trustee Franklin? Slow down. Yes, Madam Clerk.
We already had a motion and a second.
So we motion the second table to go back out, so we just do a roll call.
Right.
Yeah, just, right, we had the motion, so we're, we're good with that.
Okay, roll call, Madam Clerk.
Okay. Trustee Williams.
Both aye.
Trustee Brooks.
For the sake of our country and for the region, uh, Mr. Mayor, I vote aye, Madam Clerk.
Trustee Jenkins-Bell.
Both aye to save lives.
Trustee Franklin.
Both aye.
Trustee.
Both aye.
Mayor Rudius.
Both aye.
Mr. Mayor, that's ordinance twenty twenty, dash, sixteen.
Okay, thank you, Madam Clerk. Is there a motion?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Brooks, second by Madam Clerk will get it. All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? No one oppose?
Early oppose.
Oh, she wants to stay, huh?